I counted to fifteen. That means Chris probably has turned on the sound again.
Yeah.
I will, I will welcome everyone back. It is just after seven o'clock here on the 5th of November 2015. The New Market School Board opened at 5:30. They greeted and swore in a new member on the board, filling a vacancy that was created last month. We continued after that with a budget work session and, and had a presentation from Dr. Mark Joyce, Dr. Carl Ladd, and Dr. Richard Ayers of the New Hampshire School Administrator's Association, who presented a K-12 assessment of educational facility needs that is an important element for us in the ongoing facilities conversation. So, we adjourned just moments ago. We're now into our regular meeting. I invite everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and ask Julia to leave us in that.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for the doubling up in the, in the agenda. The agenda spoke to the appointment of the school board member back at the 5:30 hour. It speaks to it again in the agenda now. So, I would commend everyone that Kimberly Shelton has joined us on the board and will fill the vacant spot through until the election in March. That's a three-year term that was coming due for election in March of 2016. And we welcome her and we're glad that she's among us.
Very much.
I'll move right along. I've, we've put it on the agenda under recognition because we certainly have spoken multiple times about recognizing the New Market Community Education Partnership for all that they do in the community, supporting education and recreation. And, and so, representatives from that group are with us tonight. I'd invite them to make their introductions and tell us about the organization and help make sure that we know what you're doing for us. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you very much for taking time out of your busy schedule to let us speak tonight, and thank you for the recognition. So, who we are. New Market NCEP is a 501(c)(3) in New Market. We've been around for 11 years. Our total giving to the New Market community has just topped $80,000, with $5,400 this year alone. So, so what do we do? If I look at our tagline, "We enhance social recreational and educational opportunities for children and youth in New Market." So, what does that mean? That means that we grant funding to organizations that work with New Market's children. We have two times-a-year grant cycles where people interested in getting funding from our organization can apply a grant. Our grants are maximum of $750 per grant. Our Board of Directors, we have eight members, and we review the grants and apply funding. We look at our grants as an opportunity for maybe items that are needed that aren't maybe in the school budget, or maybe an above and beyond, something a little bit different than maybe a teacher wants to try. Just, it gives opportunities for things to happen that might not regularly happen under existing budgets. So, I just want to quickly run through some of the categories of grants that we have funded. We've funded programs like Author Visits, Bullying Education, Swim Safe Programs, 8th Graders in Philadelphia, and Interact Trips to New Orleans. We've got clubs, the Girls Group, the Garden Club, the Lego Club, After School Reading Club, the Coyote Club, the Outing Club. Fitness grants include Zumba at the junior, senior high school, yoga, cross-country, snow shoeing, and a Wellness Day. Technology has been a huge grant. We've seen a lot of grants coming in for that. We've funded countless of the Chromebooks that are being used at the 8th grade. We have iPads, GPS devices, projectors, digital cameras, printers, smartboards, lots of books at, for all levels, advanced readers, children that need help. We've had Spanish books that we've provided funding for, art books, lots, lots of books. One of the things that's always been a priority for NCEP is our funding for special needs students. So, we have gone above and beyond to help make, to help make that a priority. Funding adaptive devices, technology, and other tools that allow those students to integrate fully with regular classrooms. Finally, camp. Camp is a huge, a huge benefactor of our, our funding. We really think it's important that all kids that want to go to camp can go to camp. So, for every year in the past 11 years, we've provided significant funding for camp scholarships. So, if you, that's a lot. It's just the beginning. It's not the whole list, but I wanted to give you an idea of some of the categories. So, the question is, how do we get our money? We get it from you. We get it from our community. We have people, we do an annual Ask campaign where people donate money. We also get funds from the New Hampshire Charitable Gaming Commission, and also from individual donors. We have some donors that are very interested in a specific project, and they come to us, and we're able to help them and work through that grant process. So, we're extremely grateful for community sport, support. We couldn't do it without you. I've talked really fast. Is there any questions about us or what we do?
(inaudible).
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Alison Leahy. I'm A-L-I-S-O-N-L-E-A-H-Y, and I've been on NCE Board since 2007, so, for quite a while. Finally, I just wanted to quickly give a little plug for a program that we're running called New Market Eats. It's a
(inaudible).
Yeah, it's a celebration of community and food. It's next Tuesday at 6:30 in the Mill Space. We've got almost every, correct me if I'm wrong, almost every single vendor, food provider in New Market is participating in one way or the other. It's going to be awesome. We're going to have food. We've got fabulous silent auction items. We've never done anything like this before, so it's a stretch for us, but I think we've got a great group working on it and are, and are looking forward to it. And I know that we have some invites for you. The tickets are $25 each. We have babysitting available. And for information about New Market NCEP or New Market Eats, please visit our website, which is www.ncepconnects.org. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you guys very much.
I'd like to say to my board, I have my tickets.
I do too.
I do too.
But I'd like to see all of you there.
Oh, who doesn't?
But I think, I think it's going to be
Holy, pressure's on. That's amazing. Good.
I didn't hear an "I do" thing.
That's awesome.
(laughing).
I, I'm still trying to figure out, I'm on camera somewhere else that night. I'm still trying to figure out. It goes until nine though, so I think I can, I think I can blast out early.
There's also going to be entertainment, too. So, if you can't come for the food part, there will be some great local entertainers.
Yeah. Can we say his name?
Yeah.
So, we have John Nolan, local entertainer. So, it's not only a taste of local food in our area, it's also of local entertainment. So, John Nolan is coming. Chris, Chris, I think his last name's O'Neil, and I apologize if I forgot. He's going to be playing some jazz. John's going to be playing some, you know, folk and, and so forth. And it's going to be a really good night with, like Alison said, silent, tons of silent auction options with not only product, but also experiences, you know, like golfing, or, you know, a Gunquit Playhouse tickets, or something like that. So, come in and enjoy yourselves.
And you said there was babysitting as well?
Yes, there is babysitting at the junior, senior high school, provided by the, the Junior National Honor Society. In that, you can go to our website and kind of just look at a registration form, just, so we have allergies figured out and, and stuff like that. So, we have everyone accounted for.
Perfect.
So, thank you.
Is it in the community space?
The, the Eats event is in the Mill Space, at, the community Mill Space at the Mills. And the babysitting is at the junior, senior high school. So, make sure that, you know, you drop off your kid at one place and then drive to the other. So, they're in separate locales.
One more time, because the pressure's on. New Market Eats is next Tuesday night, the 10th of November at 6:30.
Yes.
In the Mill Space. Go to ncepcannex.org and get tickets.
Yes.
Shortly.
Yes.
Tonight. Maybe on, maybe on my iPad while everybody else talks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And thank you so much. Thank you. I, I hope you guys know, we've talked, it's come up, I don't know, maybe three or four times at least. We've said, oh, something else is spoken about, something else is said, and we've, we've suggested, we need to get them in. We need to have them come talk to us. Thank you for finally helping to make that happen. Excellent.
And when does the Ask campaign start?
Babysitting Ask letters in the November timeframe.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
It's that time in our meeting when we open to public comment, and we'll invite those from the community to share their comments with us.
Look at all those kids excited to talk to us.
They're all, I thought they were lined up. They all had paperwork in their hands.
I know.
I thought, oh, we've got speeches all ready to go. Hearing none, I would ask Julia to offer her, her report from our schools, and then we'll review the calendar of events.
Okay. So, I also had the NCEP dinner in my
Excellent.
report. So, next Wednesday, there's going to be no school. It's Veterans Day. The National Honor Society's Game Show Night is next Thursday at 7 o'clock. So, that's big. And Talent Night is tomorrow from 7 to 9 o'clock at the high school. It's $5 for adults and $3 for anyone under 12. Awards Night for the girls soccer team is Monday, the 9th at 6:30, and it's going to be in the CAF as usual, I think. And they finished 12 and 4 and in the quarter finals. The awards night for the boys soccer team is going to be Monday, the 16th at 6:30, and they also finished in the quarterfinals with a 10-6 record. Football finished 2 and 6. And I know a lot of the cross-country runners beat their personal records this past season, like all, I think all of the girls did. Aspire Testing finished, yes, Tuesday for grades nine and 10, and the quarter ended last Friday. So, I, I talked to Mr. Andruski, and he said grades will be posted tomorrow morning. So, Tricker Canning, that was done Halloween night, raised over 1,500 cans. So...
That's excellent.
Yes. And the improv show will be Friday, the 20th at 7:00 p.m.
Where's that? Is that in?
That's in the band room.
It's in the band room?
Yes, at the high school.
So, looking at the calendar, I remind ourselves about our work session on budget next Thursday night, the 12th at 6:00. We'll be here Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. for another budget work session, and back in regular session as a school board on the 19th at 7:00, reserving the option of starting at 6:00 if there's anything left about budget that we think we need more time than we can address in the regular meeting. Just heard from Budget Committee, and they're starting off in earnest on November 23rd, Monday night, their review of budgets. And the school budget is due to them that night, the 23rd. Into December, we'll be back here with a meeting on the 3rd. Folks, remember an early release on Friday, the 4th for our students. School Board meeting on the 17th, and can you believe it?
Budget Committee.
Budget Committee is on the what?
Is on the 7th.
Is on the 7th. We're back here on the 17th as a school board. We've got Thanksgiving and Christmas coming right up. It's amazing how quickly that summer went by and fall's following it. Anything else for our consideration of events and calendar?
On the 21st, you've got Budget Committee again.
So, 23rd, 7th, and 21st?
The 23rd is town.
So, you're just handing them the budget that night, but they're reviewing it initially on the 7th?
Correct.
Okay. And then the 21st got that?
And the 21st, 6:30.
Okay. Perfect. Next up on our agenda then is, we'll invite Madame Smart to join us. Carol Smart is a teacher at the high school, junior and senior high, and she's coming to talk to us about a field trip. Welcome.
Big field trip.
Big one.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm happy to be here and to say that I'm going to be doing my last trip, but kind of sad that it's going to be my last trip since I'm retiring in June. I scanned over to Penny this morning to, yes, one is from Students Loves Travel, the other's from Prometour. And I have never, I have to say, I've never traveled with Prometour, but met them at several conferences and liked, you know, what they had to say. I have traveled with Students Loves Travel. The programs are quite similar in many ways, but yet different, and especially the price, as you can see from my, from the top of those. The Students Loves Travel is a local company. They're based out of the Portsmouth, Newcastle, and they cater to the small groups that we have. His initial price came in at $895, and I just about choked. And so, I got the quote in from Prometour, which is, you can see, was $630. The Prometour trip is not quite as nice, so I've been kind of playing one against the other, saying, well, I've got this. Can you beat that price? Can you come down? And so, I've spent a lot of time on the negotiating end of this. And I have to say that I'm not quite through yet. This, there are some things that I like better about Students Loves Travel. They have, they stay at a hotel right in the heart of the old city. Prometour is right outside of the old city. So, I'm not fond of that piece. I met with her this morning, and she's working on a new quote for me, including being in the old city. Student Loves Travel also has three or four excursions more than Prometour. She's going to put in one or two extra ones that I don't, and there are things in this one that I'm not a fan of, and I'm going to have them changed, too. I'm going to try to get them both to be no more than $700. That's my goal. Students Loves Travel is not going to be as easy to negotiate down, though. He's pretty, he's pretty firm. But I'm working on it. And, and as you can see, based on my travel philosophy, is you don't give students too much downtime. And so, there are a lot, a lot of excursions. I will, I promise you, I will have them up early at 6 o'clock. They don't, and they're not allowed to sleep any later than that. And then we have them down. We have, we're ready to go for breakfast, and we take our first, our first walk of the day. And we usually have them going until at least 9 o'clock at night. They're usually very tired, and they sleep well, and, and so, the plan usually works well. So, that's where I'm at with them right now. There are, both of them have an equal insurance plan in terms of travel insurance, cancellation insurance, and medical insurance. They're both equal to that. The terms and conditions and the return policies are right in line with that, and so, I'm comfortable with either one of them at, for that piece. There's always some things that are not included, tipping usually. So, the bus driver gets $2 per day, per person. The, the tour guide gets $3 per day, per person. So, and usually to take that headache away from the kids, I, I have them do, you know, little envelopes and, you know, stuff like that. And I just, that way, it's all taken care of. Once we leave, I take care of that business for them. So, I do have Annette Blake, who has also volunteered to help chaperone. And so, I was excited about that, because she used to do the Montreal trips with me, too. And, and I am looking at Memorial Day weekend. And we do miss one day of school. I do go on Friday because of the band students. If they, if I went Saturday, Sunday, Monday, like I used to 25 years ago, they would have to not go on the trip because of the parade, and they have to play that. So, the last, at least 15 years, I've done the Fridays so that the, the students are able to, I can get them back, and then they can participate in the parade as, as they're asked to do. So, other than that, do you have any questions?
How many do you think you'll take?
I have 13 interested students. So, it is a small trip. And, but it's still big enough to, to go on the bus, so, which is good. The other pieces, too, that, is that on this trip, I always get in ahead of the, the students, no matter where I go, and I always cue the, "Please make sure you speak to them in French." And so, they're, they're required to use their, what they're learning in class. They have to do all their ordering of menus in French. They have to ask for change. They have to, so I make sure that they're, that they're placed in a position that they actually get to use the language that they're studying. So, that's, that, and we, and we do stop, and we do have great menu places, especially with Prometour. They have picked some really nice restaurants for us.
I missed it. What, what grade? Who goes?
High school.
This is high school?
High school. Yes. I, I know that I had some 8th graders that would have been interested, but it's, I can't mix the two, you know? So, so I figure, so we just, we just went with the high schools. Some disappointment to some of the others, but I couldn't do both of them together. So...
Give them something to look forward to when they get to high school. Maybe something to look forward to.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I'm, I really, really hope that the next person who comes in, in my place, male or female, is willing to continue this program, because this is, for me, has been wonderful, and it provides such a connection. And the kids get to see the language in a whole new light. So, it's, for me, it's been the, one of the most important things that I have done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, by policy, a trip outside of the state, in this pla, in this case, the country, requires action of the board. So, I seek a motion to accept the proposal and, and endorse the trip to Quebec City.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Mr. Kennison. Any other discussion? Questions?
I would like for them to come back. We, we have two puzzle trips, and I think that's one of the nice things that we get to hear about.
Okay.
When, so when you have your retirement party, you can come here.
Okay. I'll do that.
Motion from Mr. Zink, second from Mr. Kennison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a great trip.
Have a great night.
Good fun. Have fun negotiating.
And thank you. And thank you for that hard work. That's outstanding. In our packet tonight, as we continue to move forward, was a draft calendar of next year, the 2016-17 school year.
Nathan, the calendar you have before you tonight doesn't require an action. It's here for your review. It's a draft. We're following the vacation schedule of the SST in Exeter, so that we're coordinated with, with that. Otherwise, that's a, that kind of, kind of compound problem, because if we have different vacation weeks. And it follows very closely this year's calendar.
So, again, we're not taking action tonight. This is informational.
Yep.
There's a process that the superintendent will pursue, including reaching out to the
Yep, staff.
To the staff, the, to the New Market Teachers Association. But we start with SST because we don't all remember it, but there were a couple of fateful years when the school, the high schools that contribute to SST got off schedule, and we literally had two weeks of essentially nothing happening in SST, because only half the kids were going, and the other half were on vacation and vice versa, in the opposite week. So, in the region, we try to do that. This draft would have teachers returning on the 25th, a Thursday, the first day of school being Monday, the 29th of August. All of the, all of the school vacations falling in line, as they often do. I'm, I got a pet peeve, and I talked about it earlier last year, and so I would ask the board to consider it. Growing up as a kid, and I was in another state, I was growing up in Maine, we didn't say, "School will get out on the 15th unless, of course, there's snow days, and then it'll be somewhat later." We said, "With snow days baked in, school will be done on the 23rd." And every day that passed without a snow day, we looked at the calendar and thought, "We're getting out early. We're getting out early. We're getting out early." And you know what? We, I never remember having a conversation about somebody having bought plane tickets or scheduled to go to camp and can't come to school the last week. How, how is it that you could have school that week? And so, I know it's a strange paradigm shift, but at some point, I would ask us to consider displaying that differently, because it's not really factually any different, but I think it changes the conversation. I've never seen it done like that in my years here in New Hampshire, raising, you know, with kids, growing up through, not just this district, but any of them I've been involved with. But I think it's, I think it's crazy not to, because it really does shift that conversation.
Because we are. We're always scrambling. And that, that way, they can plan graduation. We're not worried about moving graduation.
Right.
All written out.
So, something for the administration to take under advisement. Maybe we can talk about that when we see it next. Any other questions about the calendar? Then committees that have met, other than our standing items, any other committees that we'd like to report on? CIP budget, budget's just getting started?
Yes. CIP.
We had a CIP meeting the other night, and one of the things we came to realize was that we were presenting stuff on the CIP that this group has never seen. And a fair number of questions came up as to why are you proposing this, or why are you proposing that? And I think it was unfair to Christine to be held out alone to be answering those questions, when we, in fact, hadn't either agreed to, to support or not to support. It would be like having a budget review meeting without us reviewing the budget. So, somehow we got to back up and decide what's going to be in the CIP and what's not going to be in the CIP before she and the superintendents, superintendents, the superintendent and the principals present it. So, I don't know how we do it, Mr. Chair, but I can tell you it was very uncomfortable.
So, I mean, the CIP is a capital improvement plan.
Yep.
And I agree with you. It should be presented to the board. It should be adopted by the board.
Right.
And submitted forward for consideration by that committee. So, I don't know what the, I don't know what the timing is right now, but we need to...
I think it could be on, it could be on the agenda for the next regular board meeting, because I don't believe we're going back to them until December, which would be the 19th.
Could also be on our Saturday meeting.
Yeah, so, the 12th, the 19th, the 12th, the 14th, or the 19th, any of those. But the one thing that I would invite is that if it can...
Well, not the 19th, because they have tentatively scheduled their next CIP meeting on the 15th. So...
19th of November.
No, it can't be the 15th. 15th is Sunday.
19th of November.
Oh, the 15th of December, I'm saying. No, December.
So, I'm talking November.
You're talking November.
Yeah, we've got meetings, we've got meetings on Thursday, the 12th, Saturday, the 14th, and then Thursday, the 19th. So, at any one of those three, or all of those three, if we need to, we should get it. We should see it. We should review it, discuss it. Even if, I remember I said on the 19th, if we have to start at 6 with a workshop, we could give that hour to the CIP if that's appropriate, if it doesn't fit anywhere else. Or if we do it on Saturday morning and it displaces budget stuff, then we could do that at 6 o'clock on the 19th. How's that?
Just, again, just to reinforce it, what, what, what happened was, we had the, the principals presenting to the CIP committee their CIP proposals for the buildings.
And being asked to justify them without the strength of the board having voted.
Yeah. And, and without you as a board having an opportunity to say, "Well, I don't think that's right. Let's not..."
Right.
So, it was, it, it's, I, I want to tell you on behalf of the CIP committee, it was very tough on this young lady across the road here to be defending something without our support.
Okay. So, let me, let's do this then. Let me ask the question. If, if it's off until December, and we have that time, Thursday at 6, Thursday, the 19th at 6 works better to have the principals potentially come than Saturday morning, because we don't, we're not bringing them in on Saturday. That's just us. So, why don't we talk about, if, and can you please reach out? And if the principals can join us at 6 on the 19th, great. If they can't, then let me know, so we can back them off and do them on the 12th instead. Okay?
Just so we can get the wheels turning on that.
Can we get it?
I understand that the, yeah, the concept is, is any, any project in excess of $75,000 in the next five years. Is that, is that the limit?
No. It's any project in excess of $10,000 in the next six years.
Next six years.
Right.
Equipment is $10,000 with three years, or $50,000 for a project with more than 10 years.
Okay.
So, if you were talking about doing the driveways, doing the parking lots?
Yep.
Is that something?
Roof.
What we were talking, okay. So, when we, so when it was presented, we were basically talking about things that could potentially be done with additional innovation for your school, right?
Right.
That's where I was getting confused.
And, and Christine did a great job, because what she did was, she took the, I don't want to speak for her, but she took the $13 million worth of stuff that needed to be done at the high school and presented it as that budget.
Okay. Just take one and pass it. That's the CIP.
So, oh, that's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Well, here. Walk away with the CIP. Thank you very much. Okay. So, so again, the 19th as an isolated hour, if it works. Otherwise, we'll schedule on the 12th.
Okay.
Okay?
19th CIP.
And then we should also say, if there's any questions that anybody has, we should let Christine know beforehand.
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks, Al.
You're welcome.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? I appreciate Mike Kennison stepping forward to represent us with Budget Committee. Dave Foltz is aware of that. He's just emailed, and I appreciate that we're, we're, we're gonna turn, we're gonna turn Mike gray. It's gonna happen by Christmas, I think, at the rate he's going. So next up, I guess, is superintendent, yeah?
Are these?
I'm guessing at this point that they're here, they're here for a class at the high school.
Oh, 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 oh. I was getting ready for you guys to come up.
What's your assignment? How long do you have to stay? This is always exciting for us. For a long time?
Oh, okay.
We're gonna, it's, it's gonna be a protracted night, so we'll see you here all the way to 11:00. How's that? Does somebody have to sign off before you go? Really? This is getting to be more fun all the time. What grade, all in the same class? What grade?
11th.
11th? Wow, senior?
So while we make them say, say, they can listen to the superintendent's search, they can hear how that goes, and then we can sign for them.
I think that's great. What's the class?
Civics.
Civics.
How we, how we doing?
This is, I don't know if this is civics, but it's, it's been civil so far. Yeah, stay for the superintendent's search. This'll be really interesting. Unless there's something you want us to bump up on the agenda for you? Do you have any special requests? Okay. Al, update us, this, things were due yesterday. Did we actually have a deadline?
Yes, kinda. Let me see where to start. The, the search was broken up into two parts. Part one was, we were gonna use local community members to identify possible candidates for the position. And they identified, I would say, seven. Not all necessarily candidates, but people that were worth talking to. So Nezdeck called up those seven, introduced the position to them, and some of those will be candidates. They also, through resumes, it's my understanding, received another 10 or so that qualify, which is, in their estimation, a pretty good number. We don't know the quality of the candidates yet. So we could have 17 or 18 exceptional, or we could have one or two or none. So the process is, now that they're gonna be sending me the resumes tomorrow morning, I'm gonna get them to our subcommittee, of which Kim is a, a member, along with Arlen Jaffey, Clay Mitchell, and Craig Dion. By the way, super kudos to Craig. He was great on that search aspect. And they're gonna look at the, at the resumes, and we're gonna meet Monday morning at 8:00 to judge the quality the candidates, the subcommittee is, before passing them on to the screening committee. We've, the screening committee is selected and had been notified, and I think, Mike, you could, you could probably go through the, the list if you'd like to. We, we asked, is that putting you in a bad position, or do you wanna wait? Okay. We followed Nezdeck's guidelines in terms of their recommendations for where, you know, what positions these people should hold. You wanna get back to that in a minute, Mike?
I get, I get the list. We contacted folks yesterday, and we've identified the following people to be on the committee: Wendy Monroe, Nancy Pagnata, Sean Pine, Julia Leary, Tom Jennings, Meg Looney-Moore, Greg Thayer, Steve Fornier, Kim Shelton, Patricia Ballantyne, and Al Zink. The email is, is in the process of, it'll be sent out first thing in the morning, and we've given them some dates and times, and so it's off and running.
And that, again, is consistent with the recommended staff of...
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
And then you will give them all those resumes?
I'll, I'll tell you. So on, on Tuesday, is that the Newmarket Eats? On Tuesday, we're gonna get to, get this group together at 4:00 in the afternoon, and Carolyn Burke from Nezdeck is gonna come up and give us a "How do you do this job?" lecture. You know, what do you look for, and what's the process like? And we're gonna introduce to them, to the screening committee on Tuesday, the applications and resumes. They're confidential. You're gonna take home a stack of resumes, and you're gonna read them and live with them for a day or so, and think about the candidates, and you're gonna put together questions that you wanna, questions you have about the candidates, or further information you need. Then on Thursday, we're gonna get together again at 4:00, and we're going to develop a, a candidate slate of probably three or four or five people, that we think out of that group of hopefully 17 are the best. And so that's next week. Then we will be getting together, once that is done, getting together to interview those, those candidates. After that's done, we're gonna pass them on to you. And that should be done in December.
Can, can the, you know, the subcommittee working with Nezdeck start to put together? I mean, the time is, time is upon us to be talking about the public, the public process, the, the interviews, all of that. We should probably...
It's all scheduled.
It is, okay.
It is all scheduled. I, and I've got it here.
Okay. So if we can, only because I wanna, I mean, I wanna make sure that the board is aware of it, so the board can sort of, you know, make plans.
On December 1st, we present the finalists to the, finalist candidates to the school board. On the 1st through the 6th, the school board's gonna review the resumes and prepare its questions. On the 7th through the 10th, we'll be doing the evening interviews, and candidates will , will visit Newmarket during the day of their interview. And then on the 14th to the 18th, the school board will do whatever referencing or visiting it wants to do to the, to the candidate's district. And at the end of, the, end of December or early January, the school board will begin its deliberat, uh, begin its deliberations and entering negotiations with the finalist. And obviously, during those interviews, we'll, we'll have opportunities for the community to meet the final candidates. We'll have a, a reception for them, and... So that's it.
So, here, I guess, I wanna, I'll throw it out to the board, but I, you know, I think my inclination is clear in my asking the question. I think, what do you think? Should the board entertain a motion to establish this screening committee and give it the way to the board, so that we've done that, and that's a, in case there's any conversation? I wanna, I'm gonna read those names back to you, and then see someone, see someone motioning. Wendy Monroe, Nancy Pagnata, I mean, I think it's worth saying, Wendy is the executive director, last I knew, of Great, Great Bay Kids Company?
Yep.
Nancy Pagnata, teacher at the junior, senior high school. Sean Pine, principal at the elementary school. There's somebody on here named Julia Leary.
Yeah.
Tom Jennings is a resident in town, has a child, one, two, in the school? One, Hunter? Meg Looney-Moore has children in the school. She's an educator, a budget committee member, last, still a budget committee member? Former school board member. Greg Thayer is a senior in town and former educator, longtime educator in our schools. Steve Fornier is our town administrator. Kim Shelton is seated at the table. Pat Ballantyne has been our curriculum coordinator for a number of years, and a 40-plus-year employee. And, and Al Zink is the chair of the search committee. Any questions, thoughts? Let's take a motion to accept that as the screening committee.
So moved.
Second.
Since the other two are on it, I appreciate you guys helping us that way. Any discussion? I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Kennison. All those in favor of the committee, as I, as, as described, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous, and we appreciate the efforts. I guess the only other thing that I would say is, we should, as a board, talk more about those dates and times, and, and how, what we're gonna do in terms of, like, you know, I don't know, you said, the board will do whatever it wants to do with this regard, and regards to this, in the week of the 7th, week of the 14th. If we're gonna do things like, like, public interviews, or meet and greets, social hour at one of the schools with our finalists, for instance, you know, a 30-day head start to make sure that the public knows that's coming.
And it's Christmas time.
It's Christmas time, and it's between the holidays. So what's even bigger than that is, Christmas concert, all of those, all those other things that I don't want us to collide with. So, let's, let's see if we can't agree to get that on the calendar, and then we can publicize it.
And let me also say that that's our schedule. It's not being driven by anything other than trying to get this process completed. I mean, we put together a schedule that, like, like Mike did, pedal to the metal to get this thing done. But having the interviews in early Jan, I mean, the meet and greets in early in January...
Wouldn't be bad, but...
Totally fine.
But I think one of the things that's really important, and I appreciate that the board has done it, is, given the possibility that you may, you may get these resumes and do your initial screening, and see that there's sufficient, there isn't sufficient quality to march forward, you wanna dial back, search harder, advertise more, or what have you. Or you feel that it is a quality, a sufficient quality as a, as a pool, and you move forward. But in final analysis, we ultimately come down to a couple of candidates. We like one, they're not interested, they back out, and now, and then you, you have to launch again. If we can make sure that we know before Christmas whether we're finding someone or not finding someone, that'll make life a whole lot better. So I appreciate the schedule. Your schedule has been a good one, because...
Well, let me say again, Monday morning, that subcommittee's gonna get together and make that determination.
And talk about it.
And if we see a weakness in the slate of candidates, we're gonna come to the board with a recommendation.
What to do next, yeah.
What to do next. And we haven't talked about what to do next, because we hope we don't have to do anything. But it, it may be starting to then over again. I mean, God forbid.
Okay. Okay, perfect. There was an email that came out just a day or two ago, with regard to our summer projects. We've been looking forward to this final announcement. So, since you sent the email, do you wanna make the announcement?
I wanna steal your thunder, Mike.
You wanna make the announcement?
No, no, go ahead.
The elevator is officially operational, so...
Julia, have you been in it yet?
No.
Stop it! You haven't taken a ride?
You have to have the special key to take a ride.
Oh, you have to have the special key?
Yes, you gotta know certain people.
Are we doing a tour specifically to get ahold of that key? So, we, we've passed, we've passed all inspections?
Yeah, so Monday, they had to come back. The following week, we had an inspection, and the shunt emergency brake failed, so then they had to come back on Friday to install it. And then we got re-inspected this past Monday, and it passed, so we're good to go.
How do they know it failed, and how do they know it's gonna work?
Because they test them. They test it.
Who do they put in the elevator to test it?
No, they have to, they, they, it's like, it's like, a shunt is like, it's like a, it's a breaker.
I know.
So if that the fire alarm and sprinkler were to go off, because water and electricity kinda don't mix, so what would happen is, it would trip it, so that it would lose all power to the elevator. And that did not happen. So if we, the sprinklers turned on, we could have a problem. You'd be stuck in the elevator, so it's all fixed and tested, and so we're good.
And what's the date?
What's the what?
What's the date today? It was done, remember, it was October 14th?
It was technically done on Monday, so what was Mondays?
November 2nd.
Monday was the 2nd, right? So November 2nd.
Not bad.
Who's counting?
There are a couple of other punch list items, I guess, of our own, that you don't have to comment on tonight, but next time, maybe we could just have a sense of where we're headed with regard to final billing on the, the, on the copper property, how that, how that flushed out. If we've had any creative ideas yet about how to side paint or clean up aesthetically the outside of the, of Art Academy?
I do have...
What are we calling it?
I, I like Art Academy.
Great.
Do, are they going to put grass seed on, on that dirt?
That was, that was in the bid to grass seed it. I think we're beyond the window for seeding.
Oh, what a perfect week it was. I know. This week was perfect, though.
I, I, I think we're beyond, I think you have to seed between August 15th and September 15th. Takes three weeks to germinate, and it won't take if we seed now. But I'm not, that's old information.
Okay.
That's previous project. But I, I'm not sure we're seeding until the spring, but it is part of the project. I'll check. I'll find out.
I, I, rather than wait for cor, we didn't, I didn't put correspondence on the agenda. We, we received, at least I received, maybe you and I, maybe everybody, received an email from an interested party, wondering about doing, I wanna say it was a Christmas tree burn.
Yeah.
On that property. Did you see that?
Yeah.
I haven't responded to that or acted on it, and I say this publicly now, so that whoever it was that made the request will understand. I was really hesitant to say we would do anything to defile that space, because it's, it's so smooth right now, and it's so clean. And so I guess I put it out to the board and say, maybe as a policy directive, do we have any desires, one way or the other, with regard to that property? Meaning, there are going to be requests. Next will be, and I just make them up, right? It'll be, can we put the farmer's market out there in the middle of the, the dirt field? Can we this, can we that? Thoughts about that property?
I, I just, I just wanted to compliment Rick and his crew, first of all. I mean, when you drive by it, it looks amazing. You know, I didn't know...
So much progress.
It's unbelievable. You can see how flat it is. I mean, they, they, they took paints to make it flat, and, you know, the rocks, the rocks look great, too, but...
I know, it's so pretty.
It, it looks, it looks nice. But, that's a goo, good question, Nate. I mean, if you allow one use, I mean, I, you know, I don't know, it's, it sounds like kind of a cool event. I mean, I would sort of defer to the fire department on that one, you know, burning Christmas trees, and, but, I mean, maybe we oughta come up with a policy, if we don't have one already, before we, you know?
I'm sure there's a policy on the books right now about use of, of school facilities, right? But, boy, it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to, you know, I certainly didn't wanna, and I didn't pass it on to superintendent, I just thought, wow, I don't want a big pile of something out there after we just got done making it look like it's not a pile of anything anymore, so...
And that was my big, who's going to clean it up? And we're going to, would they have to make it pristine again, and...
Don't you have to have permission? Because when I, when I grew up in Bedford, we used to do it at the fire station, and the whole town would come and burn them, and then it ceased, because I thought the EPA said we could no longer burn them anymore.
Oh.
Because of the tinsel.
I don't know...
They used to grind, do you remember they used to grind them?
Yeah.
The Velenskis ran it.
Well, you know, they did, as I recall, now, now that I'm thinking about it, they did offer in that email to come in and explain it. Maybe we can offer them that opportunity.
They could come and talk about it. Maybe there's something that could be, because, you know, another bad snow, and I know Mr. Malaski will be back in here saying, "By the way, can I put several million yards of snow out there?" So...
Well, that's why I was hoping we'd get seeded.
Right. Okay.
Let's hope not.
So let's follow up on the email. We'll offer them the, you know, the opportunity to approach us.
There's also a burn pit up at the transfer station.
Is there? Okay.
Oh, it's a huge burn pit.
Oh, I guess, of course there is, yeah. For just that kind of purpose.
It's not, not a nice setting, though, for, for.
Oh, I didn't realize it was a celebration.
It was going to be like an event.
It's a fundraiser, too, I think.
Oh, oh.
Isn't it? I think it's a fundraiser.
Yeah.
Bring their recycling, I guess.
All right, yeah, I'll follow up. We'll, we'll invite them to come and present to us. Any other questions about summer facilities? You know, if you guys can follow up to try to clean that up, then we can take that off the agenda moving forward.
Okay.
Boy, since we've last met, a lot of, a lot of progress, Michael, with facilities. So you want to comment and bring us up to speed?
Yep, I will. A few things. I would, I would ask that people read Dr. Joyce's report. I put that up on, well, another announcement. Belatedly, the, the supply lines now catching up to the Army. We have a web, webpage on, for the facilities committee, on the schools, school site. We've uploaded minutes, documents. I put a timeline on there so you can go to each, everything we've done since the JAC report was released is on that timeline. So anybody who's unfamiliar with all the things that we've done along the way, it's there. You can go, click on the document that pertains to it and just, and just read through it. We put up there a link to Channel thirteen, so all the meetings aren't up there yet. They will be shortly. But if people can just, that's, this is like one-stop shopping on facility stuff. They'll be able to, able to go there, click on, watch a meeting. Also, we created a facilities committee Facebook page. It's a non-comment page. It's simply informational. So that's live as well. You can also go on to the, the SAU page and there's a link to it. So you can sign up for that. It's just an easier way. Everybody gets, you know, well, not everybody, but a lot of people get notifications via Facebook. So we'll populate that. We'll send out, you know, next facilities committee meeting, here's the agenda so people can, you know.
Is it New Market School Facility Advocates or New Market School Facilities?
New Market Facilities Committee.
Committee, got it.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's up in live. So.
Interrupt.
Yeah.
YouTube. If folks are looking for those facilities committee meetings, I couldn't find them on the Channel thirteen page, you know, the, the Peg Central. But Chris gave me a link to YouTube. So if you go to YouTube and you look for New Market Facilities Committee, you'll find, you'll find your way and they're all out there and available. And I, I watch them there, so. Informationally, I think.
Well, why we do that, can we sign so that?
Yeah, we can sign. You guys want to call it? Go ahead.
Or do you want to stay longer? Because it is fun. I think they want to stay.
Was that a mistake for me to mention?
Say that to me one more time.
It's Benzo Noah.
The town has moved on from Peg Central. It's all YouTube.
It's all YouTube?
Yes.
Which is why you can find it on YouTube.
And I don't know what I just repeated because I don't understand it.
Thank you, thanks, Chris. Thank you, sir.
Just come on up.
So all of our, all of our meetings now are available to you on a YouTube channel out there. So if we don't already have that link on our, on our school website, we're going to get it.
How many do you need?
We're going to get it out there.
All of us? So everybody grab a board member.
Grab a board member. We're all.
Yes. Just the end of it?
It's right here.
Right here. You got, you got the chair. He's the boss.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming.
All right, thank you.
Remember when you turn eighteen, you can vote.
Drive safely home. Nope.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do you guys need signatures?
Come on. Don't be shy.
Will?
You sat anywhere.
Anywhere.
Right. Love always, Al.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Guys, now you can leave. Now you can leave it, Will, right? All right, so Michael, go ahead. Keep going. George, interruption.
That's, that's okay. Just continuing on. So that's, that's a good resource for people. But also, we've had, by now, we've had two meetings with, with the architects, Banwell. I reported on the first meeting last time. Had a second meeting a week ago. And just, just a couple of highlights from that meeting and just a couple of reminders in general about the process. We're at the very early stages, okay? We have Mark Joyce's report, which we're going to synthesize with our own internal ed specs over the next couple, two or three weeks. I guess, Nate, we'll talk more about that, but, on ed specs. But, so that really is the foundation. I mean, that tells us what we, what our needs are. And so in that respect, we're sort of building the plane a little bit and flying it at the same time. We're trying to move, move things along, but those ed specs are really what we need to run with. They're going to tell us what our, our needs are, what our space needs are. And I think, I think Dr. Joyce's report goes a long way to helping that. It's an independent look. It's easy to read. It makes sense. So again, I would commend that to people. The other thing is just, you know, we had a, we had a, you know, I think the meeting ran almost three hours last week with Banwell. And one thing they mentioned that people should just keep in mind, on their last project, they came up with seventeen iterations of, you know, renovation or build new that they went through. So there's, you know, I would just ask people to be a little patient on that. We're going to go through, through some stuff. You know, iterations last week concentrated mostly on renovation, both at, at the junior senior high and down at the elementary school. Those are just two conceptual drawings. We're not promoting any of them. We're not prioritizing them because they went first. That's, you know, Ingrid said that what you want to do first is just look to see if renovation's possible. Because it's, it's typically the, the most cost-effective way to go because you don't have to drag over utilities and, and, and clear land and all that. But that doesn't mean we're heading in that direction. We're looking at everything. So I would just ask for a little patience in that regard. We're not putting, we're not promoting football fields on the carpenter property or any of that. If, a danger is you got to watch the whole meeting, okay? And, you know, the, the football field and baseball field stuff, with some of the feedback from staff. It, it wasn't something that, that the facility committee was promoting or even think that it, it might end up that way. So just keep that in mind. Bear with us. One thing on the, we invite people to come to the meetings. We invite people to comment. All of our emails are up on the, up on the website. Also, a neat feature on the website is you can submit written questions right there, which the facilities committee will get and can go through. Call us up. Don't, don't be shy. But the process is going to, you know, we're going to look at a lot of things. And it might, might appear on a snapshot, if you just, you know, tune into one meeting, that, you know, we're sort of off the rails a little bit. But, but the reality is, is that we're going to need to look at every reasonable sort of option. Because let's say, for instance, we decided to go with a new school for the junior senior high and, and some renovations and additions down at the elementary. Well, we're going to have to explain why we didn't renovate and vice versa, you know, for, for any of these things. So if it may appear obvious to people that they, that one direction doesn't make any sense, well, there's, there's a method to this. Because we, we need to answer all the questions of why each possibility makes sense or does not make sense. And we need to, we need to really drill down on that. So I would just ask for some patience there. Relatedly, I did go up to the legislature a couple of weeks ago, sat through a committee meeting on Representative Cahill's bill about twofold, to bring back, to lift the moratorium on state aid, but also to let towns like us qualify for retroactive aid, for, for instance, for the life safety stuff that we did. I guess, I guess the, the feeling is, is not really much different. I don't think anybody's holding their breath for the moratorium to be lifted. It's not totally hopeless. I guess there's some hope that, that the composition of the legislature might change over the, effectively over the next couple of sessions. But in any event, it occurred to me that I think we ought to take a position as a board. We ought, and since I bring it up, I'll volunteer to, to do the first draft, but we ought to write a letter and get it to the, and I know Tony's been working on it, too. But we, we ought to get a letter out as a board, you know, essentially saying that we need this back. It's, it's, it's important and we got to hit the right people, the finance committee. So I'll take a first stab at, at that draft and we, we should get that off. But, you know, it's got to start somewhere. So that's it for now. Next meeting is, we had to move it, actually. I, I had scheduled it at New Market Eats time. So I got, I didn't get up out of my chair before I got a thousand texts on that one. So, so we wisely have moved it. We're, we're looking at the eighteenth because we couldn't do it then, on Veterans Day of next week. We have a board meeting that next night, so we're looking for the following week.
So is the eighteenth?
In, in progress, but yeah. Be firmed up shortly. That's it.
Thank you.
But not the, but, but not the seventeenth? Which is a Tuesday night?
That's, yeah, what was going on on Tuesday?
Something, okay.
Something was going on.
There's a conflict.
Something else is scheduled.
So now you're looking at Wednesday eighteenth? Okay.
Yep.
Well, let me just, I mean, I think, I made a comment when we started out. Dr. Joyce and his team from New Hampshire School Administrators delivered to us the report that Mike just mentioned. There are, there are a couple of minor, they're not spelling errors, they're just the wrong word. The word was quiet, but it's quite, which passes, passes spell test but doesn't meet, doesn't work in context. So, and there's a couple of, there's, there's two instances where there's a typo in the numbers. The result of the numbers is completely correct, but the numbers in the midst are not correct. So rather than have those come up later, if we can connect and get that changed from the electronic version that he gave you, so that those are fixed. And then we need to get that to the website and make that available for public consumption.
Yep.
Get that to the principals. And they are, they've talked at your meetings. I've been back down, had a chance to watch the meeting. So the principals, when last I was involved, did their conversation, were, were reworking the, the specs, the ed specs for, with regard to the current program. Because there have been some changes since the, the last spin at that document, especially at the elementary. I think there were some changes that a, a new principal in this case really wanted to make sure were reflected. So they're working on that. They will now connect the dots with this report from Dr. Joyce's crew. And, and I know that they'll bring it to facilities for some more dialogue and conversation so that it can be made as a, made a resource to Banwell. So I expect that'll happen very quickly, so.
If I could, for those, for those of you that didn't have an opportunity to see Dr. Joyce earlier on, I would really recommend you do. I, I, I've been a bit of a doubting Thomas as, as it related to the credibility of numbers and enrollment and classroom size and everything else, until I heard his report tonight. He's, I think he's taken a conserv, not a conservative, I think he's taken a realistic approach. The, the reports on the website, in, before you jump to conclusions about how big a school should be or how small it should be or where it should be, I think it's important for citizens to read that report because it's in clear, plain language, much different, much different than some of the original numbers that we saw in the past. Significantly different. So I, I, I can't go by without telling you, I think for the first time, we've hit the nail on the head in terms of a, a good look at how big our schools need to be.
It's very difficult to read that report and poo-poo it because it's too verbose or dismiss it because it seems to be over, over, overreaching. It's really a spot-on.
It's there.
You know, comfortably written. It'll be, it's a good read. It's no Judy Blume, but it's, you know. So that's great. I agree. Everybody should read it. We'll make sure we get it out there and highlight it. Anything else under our continuing items?
Both set.
Then in personnel, we have request for leave that was in your packet. I'm spinning to it now. The leave comes to us from Elizabeth Franciscini, who is a science teacher at maybe eighth grade. Is that right? She seeks a leave through the second half of this fifteen sixteen year, returning in the fall of sixteen for sixteen seventeen. I believe this is a shall not may, and so I seek a motion to accept the request for leave as presented.
I'll move. I'll second that.
We wish her well in her time. All those, sort of, a motion from Ms. Shelton, second from Ms. McKinney. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? We're unanimous. You knew it had to come at some point. Maybe we could convince him not to have it happen now?
You would hope.
We have a, an announcement of intention to retire from our guidance director, Tom Pavlidis.
I, I.
He seeks, he's, he'll be with us for the sixteen seventeen year. He's announcing, he's announcing his intention to retire at the end of two thousand seventeen and we'll have to look for a replacement for seventeen eighteen. I know that that will, I know that that will, those will be big shoes to fill. I seek a motion to accept his announcement of retirement.
I move to accept Mr. Pavlidis's intent to retire in a year, and I'm grateful that he's giving us a year notice. I guess we might have to put Al on that committee.
A second.
Any other discussion?
And I, I hope that everybody understands, he does everything in a high school. And each one of these kids, as the classes have gotten bigger, each one of them has left with guidance from him. This is a huge loss. And, yeah, we're going to need a committee.
I'm a real champion of the Seacoast School of Technology and, and the technologies programming that, that. Somebody's serenading one of you. You don't know it yet, and if you knew Morse code, you could probably translate that.